Good evening, Champaign County Board. I would like to call this meeting to order. 6:32? 6:33, I'm sorry. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Michaels, Owen.
Here.
Pugh.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rogers.
Present.
Sexton.
Here.
Smith.
Present.
Store.
Present.
Straub. Taylor.
Here.
Thor'sland.
Here.
Vanik Theronat.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Covert.
Present.
Esri.
Here.
Barney. Fertado. Greer.
Here.
Henauer Friedman.
Here.
Locke.
Here.
Laxson. Carter.
Here. Thank you. We have a quorum present. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Locke? Covert? A motion or move by Locke and second by Covert? Is there any discussion? Dr. Fertado?
I see, I think it's the presentation, am I correct, that's being Zoomed is the Willard County? Would anybody be interested in maybe moving them up so they don't just have to hang out on Zoom while we have our whole meeting? So could we move them to a, can we move E before A on finance? So could we move them to a, can we move E before A on finance? That is a motion.
Okay. A move by Dr. Fertado and second by Ms. Taylor? So we'll move forward with our presentation from Willard Airport? Okay, so I would need a roll call. Need a vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And so then we need a roll call for the vote. No roll. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Is there any discussion? Okay, so it's approved. Thank you. So we'll move forward with our Willard. So can I get a motion for the approval of minutes for February 13th? Moved by Esri.
So moved, yep.
Second by Smith. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion passes. Is there any public participation? Seeing none. Is there any communication amongst the board? Mr. Wilson?
Thank you Chair. Two items. One is the Veterans Assistance Commission meeting will be on March 20th. So they meet once a quarter, and so it'll be March 20th here at 6 o'clock, not in this room, but next door room. And the second item is, guess what? It's voting season. Early voting started on Monday. There are 11 new polling locations that were opened up. That makes 12, including Brookins. If anybody wants to know where and when to vote, then that information is on the county clerk's website. Both the location and the timeframe. So that's Monday through next Monday, even Saturday and Sunday. Just encourage everyone who's listening to vote and encourage other people to vote because normally in the primaries, it's about 20% of the population votes. So it'd sure be awesome if more people voted rather than just 20%. That's the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Definitely would like to echo that. Please vote, please vote. And so then we will move for, oh, Dr. Store, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just learned that the Economic Development Corporation is moving forward and hopes soon to have the Small Business Recovery Grants available soon. Would you care to speak to that, Ms. Carly McCrory?
Okay, sorry about that. Yes, we have had it on our priority list. Out of the three ARPA-funded projects, we knew that that would be sort of the last one that we focused on due to timing of things that we had going on and then some of the state grants that were rolling. But I am working very closely with our SBDC Director Madeline to get those formalized and launched so we can deploy those dollars for small business grants. And I'll come back and present on, at a future meeting.
Do you have a target date for that?
No. Soon, I promise. I will provide an email update as soon as we get closer.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Mr. Eric Thor'sland?
Just Eric. We're always asking people to be careful out on the roads during harvest season, during planting season. Planting season's coming up, and I want to add something to that. It's March. All the wannabe sons of anarchy got their stickers for their motorcycles in the mail this month. And the weather's been warm. There was a bad accident on University Avenue today in Fourth Street. Motorcycle versus car. Motorcycle never wins. I can speak from experience. So watch out. A lot of people have pulled the motorcycle out of the garage that they haven't ridden since October. Maybe the lights don't all work. Maybe they don't remember how to ride quite as well as they did. Their approach speeds are a lot different than that of the farm equipment or a regular car. Look both ways, put your phone down, and don't run into them, so.
Thank you for those reminders, Eric. We appreciate that. That's okay. Ms. Locke? Jennifer Locke?
Hi, everyone. I'm just going to be here as always reminding you of interscholastic sports. This weekend, we have middle school basketball championships. Over 178 boys and girls teams will be here. And they'll be at the Ark, at the Martin Center, at St. Thomas More, at St. Maliki, and JW Eater, all up in Rantoul. So they'll be all over, and over $2.5 million is coming to our county as a result of these. And we are happy for economic development and just skill development for these children. So if you have time and you want to go see them play, $15 one day passes, and you can easily Google this online. Thanks.
And sold out hotel rooms. Great. Thank you. Any more communications from the board? All right, I'll pass it to Dr. Fertado.
Okay, we are going to start with E, and we're going to hear a Willard Airport Minimum Revenue Guarantee Fund presentation. Take it away, E. And if you could introduce yourselves.
Thank you guys very much for the opportunity to be here this evening and for moving us up on the agenda so Jack doesn't have to hang out awkwardly on Zoom. My name is Carly McCrory McKay. I lead the Economic Development Corporation. But my other hat is that I'm Chair of the Willard Airport Advisory Board. I have Tim Bannon with me, the Executive Director of Willard Airport, and Jane DeLuce with us, who is the CEO of Experience Champaign-Urbana and is Vice Chair of the Advisory Board. So we have been out doing these community presentations for this Minimum Revenue Guarantee effort. And at various times, we have had Jack Penning with Valair Aviation with us in town. But unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, so we have him joining via Zoom to cover the majority of the presentation because nobody can deliver it like Jack. So I'm going to ask Jack to pull up the slides if he doesn't mind. Excellent. And we can advance to the next slide. We just have a couple to get things started before we hand it off to him. So just to kind of lay the groundwork for the presentation, air service development is a top priority for our community and something that we're always working on as an effort. But due to various conversations that we've been having, we've been especially focused on it over the last five years for not only additional business routes, but some leisure routes as well. We believe that this has great opportunities for growth for our community to not only be able to attract and retain businesses, but bring more tourism to the area and also help to grow and sustain key industries by attracting top talent. We are also a community of remote workers, and so this is an important flexibility option that they have by having some leisure routes in our community. Next slide, please, Jack. So what we are doing now is we are going out to the community specific for leisure routes. We do have some efforts on the table for some nonstop service to DC, which Jack will cover. But right now, we are focused on leisure opportunities for Florida, Arizona, or Las Vegas. The University of Illinois, the owner and operator of the airport, has pledged $500,000. And we are now out in the community asking for a match of that to be able to put our best foot forward to the airlines for some conversations that we're currently undergoing and also have opportunities to do face-to-face meetings with the airlines. A lot has changed in the airline industry, and one of those things is just the ability to sit down and have a face-to-face conversation. So we are going to be attending some upcoming conferences with the first one in DC here in the spring. And we want to be able to have a package put together so that we can put our best foot forward, as I said. So I'm going to have Jack take it from here, and he's going to get into the specifics of what we're doing, why we're doing it, and some of the data that surrounds it. Jack?
All right, thank you, Carly. And I know the real reason that we got moved up is because my picture sitting there was so creepy, just staring over the entire board. And it's like, let's get that picture off the screen as quickly as we possibly can. You will note, I was wearing orange and blue. I am a University of Illinois graduate. My mother lives nearby in Edgar County, so she's upset that I'm not able to be there tonight. But the travel schedule just didn't work out, so I hope to see some of you, if not all of you, at future meetings when I'm back in the community and back able to take my mom out to dinner again. So there you go. And I want to point out first, before we jump into kind of our ask, that we have made a lot of progress at Willard Airport. All of our flights are now on larger jets, two-class jets, 76 seats or 70 seats, depending on the flight you take. We're in very good shape with increased capacity, and we're very happy about the work. And this wouldn't have happened if it weren't for an effort between the university, the airport, and Flightstar on the field to upgrade hangar capacity and build a new hangar in order to do maintenance on these aircraft. This is a multimillion-dollar investment made by all parties. And we would be in real trouble if we didn't have those investments already made at Willard Airport. I want to point out too, we're the only airport in downstate Illinois that has all of our flights on larger aircraft. And Bloomington has seen service reduced. No more nonstops to Detroit and Minneapolis. Frontier left the market. United's left Springfield. American ended Springfield to Dallas service. So we're really doing well compared to peers, and I think it's important to start there. I will note, Breeze Airways, a low-cost carrier, did launch service from Springfield to Orlando and to Tampa. The difference in their market compared to ours is they had a revenue guarantee, like what we're talking about today, already put together. We did not. We're coming to community partners to work on this because we don't want to be left behind. I'll explain what that means in greater context in just a moment. We know service to leisure destinations does well in central Illinois. Many of you know Bloomington's had service on Allegiant down to Florida since 2007. 90% of the seats are filled, but only 3% of the passengers that use the service in Bloomington come from Champaign County. Our travelers, when they leave the community and don't fly out of Willard, are flying primarily out of Chicago airports. They drive right past Bloomington, not exactly past Bloomington, but you understand what I mean when I say that. The big challenge for airlines right now is a massive pilot shortage. We're almost 14,000 pilots short of what airlines need to fly the networks that they had in 2019. That shortage caused by mandatory retirements, by retirements that happened during COVID, and by regulations and how many hours pilots have to have in order to be in either the right seat or be the captain of the aircraft. This gap is going to grow. And what's happened is airlines have had to really scrutinize what they fly. And we've had success in getting more and more seats into our market while other airports like Bloomington, like Springfield, have seen airlines leave. This is going to continue to happen as this pilot shortage worsens. And it underscores that we have to share risk with airlines when we're recruiting service. We have to share risk when that service starts. We have to remove as much risk as possible. We have to remove as much risk as possible in order for our business case to even get a chance. Right now, in the U.S., about 360 airports have scheduled airline service, and you can see the dot where Champaign County is and where Willard Airport is. If regional carriers continue to cut service at the current rate they are cutting service, these are the airports that are left. More than 100 airports are going to lose all service, and you will know, Champaign County is erased from this map. This is the critical issue and the critical juncture in retaining and growing air service to get our airport to the point where it won't lose service completely. There are many communities already have lost an airline. 11 airports since 2020 have lost all airline service. 11 airports. Many more face service loss. 131 airports have lost at least one airline since 2020. So since the pandemic took hold, 131 airports have lost an airline. More are going to lose a network carrier because there are just not enough pilots to provide service. So what has happened is that across the country, revenue guarantees have been required in order to start service. So what is a revenue guarantee? It's not a subsidy. We are not trying to subsidize airline service. What we're trying to do is share risk at the beginning of a route. And what that means is we come to an agreement with a carrier, like all of the routes you see on this map have done. We know how much service is going to cost, and we have a revenue target for every single flight. At the end of a quarter, we tally up the ticket revenue, the bag revenue, any other ancillary revenue against that target. If we are over target, we owe absolutely nothing. The airline's profitable. If we are under target, we reimburse the difference. The key to the revenue guarantee we're talking about, which is focused on leisure service, getting people to and from places in Florida and in the West, is that the University of Illinois' $500,000 commitment goes first. So if we are invoicing against the guarantee, the university's money will be spent entirely before any partner funding is spent. And I will tell you, having worked on more than 100 of these agreements, many of the ones you see on this map, we know very, very quickly if a route is going to work or if it's not going to work. A great example is Salem, Oregon. The capital of Oregon had no air service. We negotiated a deal with Avella Airlines to start service to Las Vegas and Burbank, very similar to this agreement. Immediate success, and no drawdown of that guarantee over the first six months. And Avella just announced service to Santa Rosa, California, from Salem. That's how we want this project to work. So what we do is we try to match our strategy to existing airline strategy, which is what you see here, the bases that low-cost airlines already have. So we're not going to convince somebody like a Breeze Airways, or an Avella, or an Allegiant to fly to someplace like Washington, D.C., because they don't have any presence there. So we're talking about places where we know we have a lot of demand, and we're talking about places where we know service has the greatest potential to be successful, places where airlines are looking to place aircraft and crews. That's the key. And so that's why our targets look like they do, because we believe we have more than one potentially willing airline partners if we can put together a seven-figure revenue guarantee to make this happen. Now, we are still recruiting service to Washington, D.C. That, we've got about $1.92 million in revenue guarantee funding, and we're still working on this project. The pilot shortage has definitely delayed us here because the regional carriers just don't have enough pilots to add service. But this project is different because we are dealing with airlines that are actively looking to expand and expand right now. Going to skip past this, I want to point out that the cities of Champaign and Urbana generate about 65% of our total demand within the Champaign County area. But you will note, many other communities, including some communities in places like Vermillion County, generate significant numbers of passengers per day. That's the number you're looking at here, passengers per day. And so with these numbers, we know we've got the potential for success. To Orlando, right now, the Champaign and Vermillion County area generates 85 passengers every single day. Eighty-five, or rather, 89, excuse me, when you add these 89 passengers every single day, of which 84 drive to Chicago to get on flights. All we're trying to do is pull back the passengers that we know already exist. It's the same in each of these markets, where the majority of the passengers are driving to Chicago. We're also working to generate more economic impact. The airport right now has almost $100 million impact on Champaign County. There's 751 jobs that exist because the airport exists. Every single day, an average of 122 visitors arrive at Willard Airport, and the airport generates $14 million in taxes. You look at the breakdown of current taxes, these are things like property taxes paid by people who have jobs at the airport, those who do maintenance for American Airlines, those who work for the airline, those who work for the airport itself. Champaign County is a beneficiary of about $408,000 in annual tax revenue that would go away overnight if the airport ceased to exist. So that is hugely significant, and we know that number will increase as we increase the number of jobs on the field. We looked at each new route. Generates about $4 million in impact to Champaign County alone, with new payroll of over $1 million and about $850,000 in new tax. That's from each route. So if we get three, multiply that by three, because what happens is we generate more traffic from those destinations. We think, oh, people are just going to go to Florida. People are just going to go to Phoenix. That's not true. We're generating reverse flow. People have moved to Florida and want to come back. Families who live in Florida and have a student athlete that can finally come affordably and see the games in Champaign, that's what we are generating, more hotel nights, more spend in the community. I live in Tucson. If we had a nonstop to Phoenix, I would drive to Phoenix, and I would be back to see my mother much more often than I am right now. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing, and we're very happy to answer questions. And again, thank you so much for the opportunity for us to be able to present to you. And again, I'm very sorry I can't be there in person. I hope to see many of you when I'm there later in the month.
He said my key word, affordable. I think people would like to fly out of Willard, being so convenient, living in Champaign County and being able to fly out of Champaign County. Me, in the past, looking at Willard in Chicago, I've always got a better deal out of Chicago. So that's what I'm hoping that this would bring, affordable airfare prices to Champaign County. So I would like to see, like, what would the price range be? If you could share maybe some of that, what would the ticket prices look like? Thank you.
Absolutely. I'm happy to answer that question. The carriers that we are targeting, the Breeze Airways, Avella, Allegiance of the World, their average fares come in around $60 to $65 one way. We would expect introductory fares in the range of $59 to $79. And there would be, it would be rare that you would find a fare over $200 round trip. These airlines have much lower costs because of the way they're operated. They charge lower fares because that's their benefit. They're trying to get people off the couch instead of away from another airline. That's their competition. So that is a big goal with this project, is to lower our overall fares and to ensure that more and more people in Champaign County can actually afford to use Willard Airport.
I'm so, thank you.
I forgot I'm chairing this part. I totally forgot that I was chair. You even said something to me, and I was just listening so hard. I was like, yeah. It's cool. Jamal, really sorry.
Thank you. Will this affect the current flights that we have, like the direct flights to Dallas and Chicago at all? And if so, how?
Yeah, we've looked at that. Thank you very much for the question. We have absolutely looked at that. As you saw in the data, for the leisure markets, particularly in Florida, we are losing 90% of those passengers to other airports. So really, all we're trying to do is to ensure that those people don't have to drive while those who are using our flights to Chicago and to Dallas and then connecting to the world with those are not impacted. Generally, what we see when we add a new carrier to a market of this size is that the rising tide tends to lift the performance of all the carriers, and we certainly would hope for that. We know overall, we retain just 20% of the passengers that are flying to and from Champaign County, so there's a lot of potential here, and hopefully, potentially actually grow our service to Dallas and Chicago as well.
Ellie.
Can you share a little bit more about the DC route and how would adding these new routes to Florida, et cetera, impact that progress?
So with DC, we continue to have discussions with target carriers such as American and United about adding service to Washington. That is indefinitely on hold until the pilot shortage resolves. So they are really two independent projects at this point. The DC traveler is a much different traveler that we're targeting than the travelers to the leisure destinations. DC, heavily supported by the University of Illinois. As you saw, they have a $1 million guarantee. The federal government has an $850,000 guarantee on that for us, and so that's going to be heavily business travel, where these routes are designed to stimulate new traffic and capture those who are driving to Chicago. Like I said, with these low-cost carriers, the biggest competition they have are other things that are going on in the origin, essentially. Is it cheaper for me to stay here and watch a baseball game, or can I go to the beach for the weekend? That's the consideration. Where DC is going to be a much different type of traveler. So we do believe the market can support both. We believe this has moved up in priority, and we know this has moved up in priority because of the willingness of carriers to entertain leisure service.
Jen.
So with DC being on hold and it being primarily business and us going after recreational, am I correct in assuming that maybe post-COVID, flight patterns have changed and more of the people coming from here are recreational flyers?
Absolutely. That's a perfect observation. We have seen business travel used to be a solid 40% of all travel in the U.S. Now, business travel is less than 20%. Champaign is no different. University of Illinois, business travel has decreased, not to the extent that we've seen business travel decrease nationally, but by some degree, it's decreased mainly because of things like this. I'm able to talk to you by video right now. And so we don't think that business travel will ever return to the way it was before. The other piece we have noted, and Carly touched on it, is remote work. Of those who can live anywhere, being able to work for two weeks in a place like Florida and then fly back to Champaign is incredibly important, and it's a differentiator in recruitment of small consulting firms and groups like that, not unlike the firm that I am. And so with that type of travel, we've also noted a propensity to fly on cheaper fares. And what we've seen, particularly in Champaign County, is that those who are traveling for business now will often bring family with them and go for a longer period of time. That's why low-cost service is so important, because with the high fare service that's been referred to, it's very difficult to bring family along without driving to Chicago for a better deal. And so these all go hand-in-hand to give us a broad base of support that we think can be long-term successful.
Ellie.
So back to the MRG, how does it work then? You said that the universities, if the airline route is successful, then do the contributors keep the money? Like, is there a timeline, an expiration date? At what point do we get our money back?
Exactly. It would go back to you, assuming that it's not used. We would have to burn $500,000 in the guarantee before any of the other guarantors' funds are touched. At the end of a two-year period, the funds would be released. And so Carly, you may want to touch upon actual funds and cash on hand.
Yeah, so it's a, the, we present the airlines with the package that we have. Negotiation is done to reach an agreed-upon price per segment, which Jack would do for us, and like he said, he's done over 100 of these. So the two years would start at the time that the agreement is signed. Then, at every quarter, the information and the revenue marks are reviewed, and at the end of that quarter, should we need to dip into the fund at that point, is when we would. We are, we would not be proposing routes or approving destinations as part of our minimum revenue guarantee and also the incentive package that we, as an advisory board, approved for some marketing dollars and some startup costs at the airport if we didn't believe that the routes would be successful based on the data that we have from the travelers. So hopefully, we won't ever have to dip into the minimum revenue guarantee, but of course, we don't want to say that's an absolute, right? But as Jack alluded to as well, there is introductory pricing, and so we know pretty quickly what the, how successful the route's going to be. And it's really important, in the first two months of service, that the planes are full and the airline that we're working with is happy. That's why we'll have the marketing dollars upfront. That's why we're being public about our efforts. We certainly don't want this to be a surprise to any of our community members. We want them to be excited about this opportunity and to buy those tickets and for people to come here, too, when this becomes available.
Jamal.
Thank you. When do you anticipate the service is starting?
I can go ahead and take that. So these carriers are quickly expanding and quickly taking new aircraft. There have been many opportunities. For example, Springfield service started in December. I think if we had had a fund put together last summer, our service would have started in December. So the timeline is highly dependent upon when the fund is available. Having said that, I think the best case would be sometime around the holidays, the beginning of the holidays in this fall, and if not, then there are good opportunities at spring break of next year or summer of next year when we know we have high demand. But our goal is as soon as possible.
Done.
So I understand that public entities have to publish how much they've pledged, and so we kind of have a sense of where we're at with the public entities. I was just wondering where we're at, without disclosing names or amounts, but just in general, where are we at in general with the pledge amounts right now?
So as you mentioned, we've been doing a lot of public presentations, so the amounts that were defined there were City of Champaign at $75,000, City of Urbana at $50,000. We've gone to Rantoul, and they're in the budget process right now. We are presenting at Savoy, I believe it is, next week, and then the MTD at the end of the month. We are also in a lot of conversations and doing a lot of internal meetings with the private sector, too. So small employers, large employers as well. We've got a few commitments, and we're continuing those conversations and pushing for those dollars as well. Jack will be, again, back in town later this month, and we're doing another community meeting for a lot of the employers who haven't been able to make the first ones to have those conversations as well. This is a big priority for us to make sure we have broad representation. The airlines have told us that that is important to them, that they want to see that it's not just one or two entities or just, you know, public versus private at the table that's going to support this route, that they want to see both, both, both groups at the table and a broad set of groups as well. So that's certainly top of mind for us as we inch closer to the spring, when we're going to be at the conference and having those conversations. But we're keeping the airlines up to date about this opportunity now.
Beth.
Are you reaching out just to local businesses, or have you identified and are reaching out to businesses who have remote workers in the area who may also be interested in contributing?
All of the above, and we're also reaching out regionally as well, so even outside, as Jack mentioned, some of the graph there of, you know, obviously, we serve more than Champaign County from the airport perspective, so reaching out to some regional partners as well, and are in the middle of those conversations, too. So yeah, anybody that you might think of from, you know, the larger employers, but certainly those who have a large subset of So yeah, anybody that you might think of from, you know, the larger employers, but certainly those who have a large subset of remote workers. And, you know, our organizations, the EDC and ACU, we have a lot of talent retention and attraction programs. So we work with a lot of recruiters in town, and we're making outreach efforts through that as well. This is certainly a topic that comes up quite a bit. And those conversations for recruiting talent to our community is air service. So certainly following up with all of those conversations that we've had in recent years to making sure that they're aware that we're doing this and to if they're willing to come to the table and support the effort.
Eric.
Thank you, Dr. Fertado. I have some stuff that's kind of like rattling around in my head. We talked about the flight to DC, which would be a great flight. I think to have, because you can connect to a lot of places, people who fly overseas and such. And last month, we talked about this, and what we came away with was that we were waiting for a gate out in DC. The gate access was a problem, and this now, Jack, you're telling me that it's this pilot access, that we don't have enough pilots. So, and that's waiting for the pilot shortage. At the same time, you're saying that Frontier and Allegiant and some of these other low-cost carriers are waiting for us to tell them that we can guarantee them some revenue. And I guess they're not having problems getting pilots? I mean, these aren't planes that are coming from somewhere else, are they? Or are these planes that would be new routes that originate here, which means a pilot? So I find that a conundrum, that, you know, Frontier can hire pilots, but American and United maybe can't. Or, you know, maybe it has something to do with their stock buybacks versus paying pilots a fair wage. I won't get into how the airlines run their business, but this is a business that sells more product than they have. I fly a lot. I hear every time I'm in the airport, I'm sorry, we oversold this flight. I sell you five gallons of gas. Well, I'm sorry, but I don't have five gallons of gas. I know you already paid for it. I would fly for work from Willard. I fly a lot for work. I can never get my department to afford to fly from Willard. I spend a lot of time at Midway Airport, flying on Southwest to get to places. I would love to be able to get dropped off 10 minutes from my house. But often, when I add in the rental car, which I have to wait until 2:00 PM, but I think that's going to be resolved soon, 10:00 AM at the rental car counter, because this 2:00 PM stuff is garbage. Drive up to Midway, dump that rental car off, fly from Midway somewhere, come back, pick up another rental car and bring it back to Champaign. Is often still many hundreds of dollars cheaper. I understand that Frontier and Allegiant are going to come in with these introductory fares, and we're going to vacation destinations. But I'd really love to see some emphasis on a viable, someone who has to work all around the country, sometimes overseas, airport that's in my neighborhood. I would love to have a connection to Chicago that I can afford to take and then get to somewhere else or a connection to Dallas, Fort Worth, that I can then take and get to somewhere else and that my meager little department at the university can afford to pay for that ticket. And I'm not told, nope, you're getting up at 6:00 AM and driving up to Midway again, Eric. So first, explain the pilot thing and how there seems to be two different ways we get pilots. And then explain to me what we could do to maybe get that, that DFW flight going to DC.
Yeah, so in terms of, well, I want to address slots. So there's not a gate issue in DC. There's an issue, Washington National is slot-controlled. All the slots are currently being used. There are no more slots to go and get. So in order for any airline to add service to Washington National, they have to remove service to another community. Now, those, those slots are moved around quite a bit. But that's the issue there. In terms of pilots, there is a massive pilot shortage at regional carriers. There is not a pilot shortage at mainline carriers, the carriers that have more seats on the plane. Regional pilots, their starting wages have increased from an average of about $60,000 a year to $110,000 in the last two years. So the average pilot entering a regional airline like American Eagles operators is starting at $110,000 now. But once they get requisite experience, they can go to a low-cost carrier, flying 189 seats at a time instead of 76, and make a couple of hundred thousand dollars a year. And when they go to a mainline carrier, they can make, the average mainline pilot now, by mainline, I mean the large aircraft at American, United, Delta, is making $350,000 a year. So wages have increased substantially. That's also put a lot of pressure on fares. When pilot wages double in one year on a 76-seat airplane, your fare has to increase by a large margin in order for the airline just to break even on the regional route. So what's happening is the regionals are seeing pilots come in. Again, $110,000 a year, but then leaving after 12 or 18 months and going to a carrier like Novello or a Breeze. A carrier that has more seats to spread its pilot cost over. That's the big key. There are more seats and more passengers over which to spread your pilot cost. So the regionals are going to continue to be raided by the low-cost carriers and the mainline carriers for the foreseeable future, who can afford to pay more than the regionals can by virtue of having more seats on the plane. That's why the regionals are able, or not the regionals, that's why the low-cost carriers are adding so many planes. It's not hard to get pilots when you can pay them double what they're making flying at a regional, and you can afford to because you have so many more seats available. So you're seeing tremendous growth in one segment. You're also seeing growth at the larger carriers and increase in international flying with very large aircraft, because that's more economical with pilot wages where they are. And you're seeing a massive, massive drawdown in regional flying. 700 regional jets have been parked since the year 2020. 700. Many more are going away because pilot wages make it uneconomical. That's going to be our challenge on DC for the foreseeable future.
All right, so then maybe we want to think about a program at some point that is more directed towards the regional commercial carriers that are going for this, you know, business class. I mean, it's attractive to get flights to Florida in a university town. It's attractive to get flights to Vegas, just by watching how many people drive to Danville to gamble now. I'm sure that if they could afford to go to Vegas, they'd love to go there, too. But maybe that's something in the future we should think about, a way that this can be steered towards filling that particular gap. Maybe, you know, a guaranteed pilot wage for small regional carriers.
My question is more about the contract itself. The way I understand this, the way I think it's playing out, it's, the guaranteed minimum rate is over a two-year term. And the money committed by each organization stays within, whatever this group is, it stays there for two years. And then after the two years, based upon what's left, it's redistributed to those organizations that commit that money. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then the, then after that two years, is there a renegotiation or a reset? I see that the expectation is the airlines would be self-sustaining, but let's say, maybe they're not self-sustaining. Then what would happen?
If they're not self-sustaining, we will burn through a million dollars much faster than two years. I've, you know, I've seen that happen. I saw it happen in another Midwest community that had $2 million, and it lasted for seven months because the demand just wasn't there. I will tell you, the fundamentals of that market were much, much weaker than our market fundamentals. And I wouldn't be taking the time to try and work on this effort if I didn't think it could be successful. Because quite frankly, my firm has much more demand for services in airports than we have consultants. And so we're, we have the luxury of working on things that we think can be successful. And so it's, it's very rare. In fact, I'm trying to think of a a time or a contract in my career, which is now 23 years I've been doing this, where we have extended a revenue guarantee beyond two years. In fact, I cannot think of one, because it's very apparent very quickly if the service is going to work once it gets started. And if it's not going to work, we're probably going to exercise it out before the money is exhausted.
All right, then one more follow-up question. As far as the, the target rate of what the expected demand curve is in this case, who determines those numbers? What's the veracity of those numbers? Is there a certain margin or contingency in those numbers? And I'm assuming that's really also negotiated with the carrier for that target travel population. Is that right?
Correct. So we negotiate, the thing that we try to control on the front end is a carrier gives us a target revenue number per segment, what they expect to make, including their profit margin. Or in some cases, there isn't a profit margin, it's simply cost-based. We certainly work toward that. And we compare it to our experience in other markets to ensure that that rate is fair. We also compare it, every public air carrier in the United States is required to file forms with their costs to the Department of Transportation. We vet it against those costs. We do what we can to not include any riders that would allow the rate to change. Sometimes we'll see a rider, if fuel goes up by X number of cents per gallon, the rate changes. We've had some success lately in getting those removed, so we know what our target revenue is. Then it's a matter of backing into where we think the fare is going to be. We do that based on peer markets. We know what Allegiant is getting at. Bloomington, again, all of this data is publicly available. It's required by the Department of Transportation. So we have a very good idea of what a profitable fare is going to look like and what things like bag fees are going to net. And it's pretty easy for us to figure out at a certain fare with the number of people we have flying today, are we actually in a, in a position where we can pull the traffic from other airports back to CMI? In this case, we run dozens upon dozens of simulations with many different carriers. And we're confident that if we can negotiate the cost correctly, we can do what we can to reduce the risk to those who put money in. The key is in the cost negotiation. Also, we don't always know what's going to happen in terms of the global environment. We had a few revenue guarantees that had started two months before COVID. Those revenue guarantees were exhausted quite quickly, as you can imagine. If the war in the Middle East becomes larger scale, that could certainly hurt. It doesn't seem like it would, but people get afraid to travel. So there are many global issues we can't control, and really, that's the reason for the guarantee in the first place, so that the airline knows that we're partnering with them in, in the case that things outside of everyone's control can cause demand issues.
I have one question. You had mentioned that you need to go to a conference, the first conference is coming up this spring, to present that data. Could you timeline that out for us, so I have a sense of when we need to make this decision, so that we can be part of that package?
Yeah, so we are, I will say, I'm constantly talking to these target carriers. I speak to them on a weekly basis at the very, well, the farthest distance between the times I talk to them. So I'm constantly updating them on where we are with this, and they have been updated on where we are. The conference that we are attending to meet in person with our target carriers is May 20. So the better package we have in hand as of May 20, the better positioned we are going to be. The opportunity doesn't just end upon that date. These carriers are constantly looking for good places to deploy their assets. We believe we are one, so if we don't have a complete package together on May 20, the project is not ending. But it would sure help to know that we've got it put together when we're in person, so that we can have continuing in-person conversations throughout that week and better work through our case with them.
We, we did note just an initial April 1st deadline, so that we could have a sense of where we are and what we need to do. And then the 30 days following before the May conference.
That was my question, because I put in my notes, April 1st. So is that April 1st, commit by April 1st or not?
That was our goal, to get initial commitments by April 1st. Though obviously, we're going to be working up until the, we go to the conference and then even beyond that as well. So, and part of this, too, is, right, having that constant communication with the airlines. We may present them with something, they may come back and say, this is the number you're going to, you need to get to, and then we continue to go to work. But April 1st is our initial goal to see where we're at, and then we'll continue to work from there.
So would it be agreeable to the board that we put this on the full board agenda for March? I feel like having the vote close to the conversation makes a lot of sense, and there's no point in waiting to April. Is everybody cool with that? All right, folks that make agendas, could we have that on the agenda for the full board next week? I don't see any more discussion. I think that was an excellent and robust conversation. Thank you all for coming, thank you for Zooming. And you've given us a lot to think about, and I appreciate it. Have a great day. Night, whatever, Ron. Back to our regularly scheduled programming. The next three have to do with cleaning up 2023 books. Would y'all be okay if I took one and two together? Okay. So Budget Transfer, BUAA 2023, 12-1660. Fund 2076, Tor Immunity. Tax Fund, Department 075, General County, amount $32,972.37. Reason Transfer Required to Move Non-Payroll Funds to Cover the Shortfall in Workers' Compensation Line. And Budget Transfer, BUAA 2023, 12-1671. Fund 2091, Animal Control, Department 247, Animal Warden Services, about $37,119.54. Reason Transfer Required to Cover the Shortfall in the Non-Payroll Insurance Line. So we have one, Workers' Comp, one, non-payroll insurance. Do I have a motion? Jen, first, Mike, second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, Budget Amendment, BUAA 2023, 12-1577. Fund 2110, Workforce Development Fund, Department 110, Workforce Development. Increased Appropriations, $125,000. Increased Revenue, $125,000. Reason to Reflect Grant Fund Expenditures in the Appropriate Fiscal Year. Do I have a motion, Ms. Samantha? Chair Carter, second, Ed, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, our voting for 2023 has ended. Onto 2024. Budget Amendment, BUAA 2024, 2-510. Fund 1080, General Corporate, Department 075, General County. Increased Appropriations, $29,000. Increased Revenue, zero. Reason Appropriation for the Increased Cost of the External Audit. Do you have a motion? Eric, first, Mike, second. Curve is hard to see. Discussion. I believe we've discussed this once already. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, eyes have it. Budget Amendment, BUAA 2024, 2-511. Fund 1080, General Corporate, Department 075, General County. Increased Appropriations, $27,146.40. Increased Revenue, zero. Reason Appropriation Needed in Fiscal Year 2024 to Pay Remaining Amount of the Contract with Jackson Physician Search LLC for the Coroner's Pathologist Search. Do I have a motion? Ms. Lorraine, first, Mike, second, discussion. I will say, if you sit on this side of me, if you want to get in on the motions, you're going to have to, like, really wave, because I cannot. All those in favor? Opposed? Next up. These next two both are for IT departments buying things that they wanted to buy last year, but they couldn't get here to this year. Is it okay with you if I take them together? Budget Amendment, BUAA 2024, 326. Fund 3105, Capital Asset Replacement Fund, Department 028, Information Technology, IT. Increased Appropriations, $14,999.98. Increased Revenue, $0. Reason Equipment Ordered in Fiscal Year 2023 Was Not Received Until Fiscal Year 2024. Budget Amendment, BUAA 2024, 327. Fund 3105, Capital Asset Replacement Fund, Department 28, 028, Information Technology. Increased Appropriations, $29,999.98. Increased Revenue, $0. Reason Equipment Ordered in Fiscal Year 2023 Again, Wasn't Delivered Until 2024. Don, first, Erin, second, sorry. Discussion. Eric.
Yeah, this is just a dumb question. I see two curious numbers here, $14,999 and $29,999. Do I smell thresholds in county purchasing?
It's a good question.
Doesn't need to be answered tonight.
I was going to say, we cannot confirm or deny that statement. That might be a, an MC question, because these are all MC purchases. Um, yeah, it's good to read them. Um, all right, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, budget amendment, BUA 2024, Fund 2089, County Public Health Fund, Department 049, Board of Health, Increased Appropriations $19,249.98, Increased Revenue Zero. Appropriation for services in fiscal year 2023 that have not been billed to the county due to the staff turnover at Promise Healthcare.
49?
Oh.
It's at 89?
Oh, I'm sorry. Changed that to 49 on the, the, um, the, the reading of the BUA. Uh, that's okay. Samantha, I have a first. Do I have a second? Uh, Mike, discussion? All right, they've said that they're going to not have this happen again. This is the second time in the recent past that we've had a healthcare subcontractor basically not bill us, um, because if you recall, we had this with the sheriff's office not long ago. So I don't know, hopefully this will be the end of this kind of thing, but, uh, just, no other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Treasury reports are up through January. Um, I'm going to do these, the two mobile home tax sales together, if that's okay. Resolution authorizing the county executive to assign mobile home tax sales certificate of purchase, Permanent Parcel 20-032-0245 and Permanent Parcel 20-032-0246. Do I have a motion? Uh, Jen, first. Samantha, second. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the auditor's report is also up through January. GIS Consortium, um, request approval for travel reimbursement after 60 days for Caleb Bishop. Uh, do, do I have a motion? Mr. Esri, Aaron, Mike, second. Um, discussion? The auditor stopped by our caucus, and he confirmed this one, um, because it is a county, um, unlike the health department, which is not, like, a county department, will be on our purchase, he expects it to be on our purchases, not following purchase order report next month. So this will not be the last we hear of this. Um, discussion? No other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, okay, so I'm going to do a quick report. I'm going to come over to that mic over there.
Um, so, over the last few weeks, I've had a lot of board members reach out to me and department heads and just people in general, uh, reach out to me and ask, um, for like, sort of a more robust conversation update on, um, public safety sales tax, both the revenue that we are going to be getting back, um, when we have to stop, um, housing so many people out of county, as well as the public safety sales tax, um, proposal that we've been discussing about potentially going after an, um, an increase to that tax. In an ideal world, what I'm looking at my screen would be up there. And, in other words, this will be just a very boring presentation. Okay, so I'm going to make this a lot bigger. That's one of the reasons I want to see that. Um, didn't do anything. Sorry. Okay, so what I'm going to do is, I'm just going to, I want to be really clear, this is not a financial forecast. We're going to get that from Travis next week. My goal is this is going to take about 15 minutes. All I want to do is walk us through known public safety sales tax revenue and known expenses that we have discussed on the board. All right? So known expenses that we have discussed on the board. Um, and so what I want to do is, um, I, I thought about doing this ahead of time, and it, I actually thought it might be just useful for us to build it out together. So I decided to do it this way, and we'll see if that was a good idea or a bad idea. Um, what we're going to, I would like to propose that we are, I'm going to, um, do this for four years. There's three reasons for that. First of all, for those of us who, those of folks that are on the board and are going to be being elected, um, your term will take us through 2028. So I want to do this from 2025 to 2028. Second, um, some of our long-term bonds that were here before, and most of us were on the board, except Lorraine, will be retired by 2028. And so we'll have a little bit more money to play with at that time, about $600,000. And third, one of the big expenses on this comes from our IT plan, and that'll end in 20, it, that was a 10-year plan that we voted on in 2019. So in 2028, we'll be coming up with our next IT plan. So for all of those reasons, I don't necessarily think five years is, or four years, like, think about four years ago, we didn't even know there was going to be a, at, at this time right now, the pandemic was starting. We had never even heard of ARPA, right? So keep in mind that these are today's numbers, and that doesn't account for inflation, and as we know, things cost a lot more money now than they did then, right? Um, so first of all, I'm going to build this out, are, just really quick. Um, thanks for bearing with me. I'm just going to dump this, we don't really need this. Um, all right. I promise this won't be this painful this whole time. Okay, so first of all, um, I'm going to change that to money. Um, revenue returned from, uh, public safety sales tax, when we have the folks that have been, um, being housed out of county, the estimate on that is $3,100,000 a year. Um, so it's 12, let's, let's make all these real A dollars, it'll make our lives a lot easier. So that's 12 million. Um, and that seems great, right? Um, and then, in the public safety sales tax fund balance right now, we have about $3 million extra dollars. That one, we don't want a formula for, because it's just 3 million. I wish it was 3 million times four, but it's not. All right, so the total of that, of the, if we didn't do anything, if we didn't increase public safety sales tax, um, at all, that gives us about $15 million for the next four years, right? Across those four years. Um, I want to start with the things that we have to do. We have, um, and one second, I'm going to build one more formula, and then I'll be done building formulas, and y'all can, um, just enjoy. Um, it will be this. Actually, sorry. Y'all are very patient. Minus. This. And then this. Just needs to sum out. Hmm, should it be? One, let's, oh, I see why. Sorry. Okay, so, right now, you see, we've got $15 million. I'm going to make, I'm going to make this box, like, green. Okay, there. So you could see right now, we've got $15 million in the pot. Um, this year, we budgeted $900,000 in the red. Um, so if we change nothing, if our revenue and our expenses stay the same, we are perpetually forever $900,000 in the red, because, listen, 80% of our budget's personnel. So unless we start laying people off, that's what we're in. That's not, we can't do that. We did it for one year, we cannot keep budgeting in the red. So I'm going to put that $900,000 here. Okay? Um, I'm going to actually put it where it goes. Next up, this is kind of non-negotiable. Um, I asked our sheriff, um, okay, so we're bringing people back from housing them out of county, they don't come back for free. We got to feed them, pay their medical costs. There's still, because of classification issues, on occasion, will be people out of county, you know, increased utility costs. I told him to be conservative in his estimate, but I'm going to call him bringing people home. He said he thought that's going to cost us, and he was being conservative, $740,000 a year. I was right the first time. It's almost $3 million, right? Next up, um, we have software costs that have been on ARPA. We've had a discussion about maybe for two of these four years, we could continue to pay them out of ARPA. For now, just for argument's sake, I'm going to put that $200,000 a year here, uh, but maybe that's something, um, that we would want to discuss. So you're like, all right, we got $8 million, we're doing pretty good. Okay, bad news. This is where it gets rough. The Jano replacement, um, this is the courthouse, um, software system that runs our courthouse. In 2019, we estimated that that would cost 15 million. I'm going to skip right on over the formula, because it will not be times four years. The hardest thing on this is making sure I have enough zeros. Uh, 15 million, um, and I'll put that here as well. So it's the same. Um, all right, so now we're $7 million in the red. So what that means is if we do nothing, I'm not talking about any of the things y'all have said we wanted to do. If we do nothing, what we would have to do is, over the next four years, debt service $7 million. And that is assuming that our, over those four years, that these expenses stay true, and that our revenues don't decline. I'm going to leave all that to next month, when Travis does our actual finance agenda. Now I'm going to talk about the things you all have said you want. So first of all, this is a public safety sales tax. So we asked the sheriff, um, and I always forget if it's two Rs or two Fs, so we're just going to pretend that's, listen.
Two Fs, one R.
Okay, I got it right. All right, I always do that backwards. Uh, sheriff memo request, he gave us a memo that we went over a few months ago. He asked us between, um, he gave us, um, a robust sort of, if he had money to run the office the way that he wanted to, what it would cost. If you add it all up, it was between 3.5 and 4 million dollars a year. I think that's fantastic. I don't know that we have it right now, so, again, this is just me talking here. Say we decide that we could fund, uh, $3 million a year until we get the Jano system replaced. That's 12 million. All right, so now we're getting really into the red, so why don't we go ahead and add the, um, new quarter sent sales tax? That would bring us in $7 million a year. Little bit less, we're going to round up, because again, we're trying, I'm trying to be as sort of like conservative in expenditure and optimistic in revenue as possible. So that's 28 million. Okay, now we're back in, we're, we're back on the plus side. We're in $9 million, we're doing good. Second, one of the things we have talked about a lot is that we want to take care of our employees. So a lot, several of us were on this call today, um, with our firm that's doing this compensation and classification study. Our preliminary estimates on that are between 1.5 and 1.7 million, but some of that is in the sheriff's office, right? And that's already taken care of in his memo. So why don't we just be super conservative and say, employment, we're going to call this employee, uh, classification and compensation, and we'll just say that's going to cost us $1 million a year. All right? That's $4 million. The other thing that we've talked a lot about in employee is employee family healthcare. We, um, do not, basically, it is impossible for employees, not impossible, but very difficult for employees to have their entire family on our healthcare, it costs $1,500 a month. What that means is our, um, one of the reasons our premiums went up so high is we have a lot of older people on our care, because we don't have children on our care, because it's cost prohibitive. It also means, to, to be perfectly blunt, unless somebody has a spouse that could provide that healthcare, they're probably not coming to work for the county. So it limits our, um, recruitment pool. Uh, so say, I'm just, again, these are just numbers to kind of like get us thinking. If we said we were going to subsidize $1,000 of that, and say 30 families signed up, that'd be $360,000 a year. That is less than 5% of our entire employee pool, so this is a very conservative number. That number could be triple, but for now, okay, so we're $3.6 million. As we have discussed, we are supposed to be giving our veterans $1 million a year. We give them $250,000 a year, because we're supposed to be giving them 0.02% of our EAV. That's $750,000 a year that we are short, that I think we are morally responsible to pay. The state legislature told us we had to do it, but didn't give us any money to do it. Um, if we did that, that's $3 million. Okay, we're down to $600,000. The public safety sales tax, when the board originally passed this, I don't know, when we passed this, years and years ago, we committed as a board, there's a resolution, that we would give 5% of that tax to preventing juvenile delinquency, because the idea was if we prevented juvenile delinquency, that the public safety expenditures would go down, right? Because there'd be less people incarcerated. That is, I cannot imagine a universe where we would, um, abandon that, um, commitment. If we extend that into the new tax, that's $350,000 a year. Oh, I was right the first time. We're already in the red. Another thing that everybody has said that they want to do is increase jury pay. You, if you remember, the middle of the road, like, I think it was $25 a, a day or whatever, there was three options, the middle of the road was a little bit over $70,000. Um, it's by far the cheapest thing on the list. It's $1 million in the red. So, again, I'm not saying that this exactly has to be what, um, we would, um, I'm going to change this to be budget in the red, other words, it looks like weird. Um, like, that these numbers are the numbers. I, what, you know, we'd have to have conversations, you know, maybe do we want to continue to pay the software costs? Maybe do we need to, you know, ramp the sheriff up over years? You know, are the, is the VAC going to be ready for $750,000 on day one, right? Like, you know, do we do jury pay in the first year? Like, this landscape, right, is, and y'all need to, if there are things on here you think I've missed, I spoke at length about this at Finance Agenda with JJ, and he, and I could not think of, and Samantha, we couldn't think of anything else, but if there's something that you think I'm missing, but what I want us to get at is this, we as a board need to decide where, which of these options we want, right? So option one is we talk seriously about public safety sales tax or some sort of revenue, and then we discuss everything that's from budget, um, that is from sheriff's memo request to jury pay, right? Option two is we don't have that conversation during this budget process coming up, we don't talk about any of those things, because we don't have the money for them, and we have a conversation about- And we have a conversation about, we have to start having that conversation, is how are we gonna come up with that $7 million shortfall? What kind of debt service are we gonna issue in order to get our court software replaced? Right? And so what I would like to propose, and again, these are just my numbers, none of these are wild guesses, though. Like, all of these are based on either documents, conversations, research that we've had in past budget discussions, right? And so, I feel like I've talked at you a lot, which is not a good pedagogical, pedagogical methodology. So I, if, does anybody have any questions, or if you see any issues with the model? But what I'd like to suggest is that in April, we have a study session to discuss public safety sales tax, because we, as a board, have to give these folks direction, because starting in May, they kick up the budget process. And there's two kinda conversations that they could be having with department heads, right? And we have to tell them which of the conversations that they want. And, and remember, at the end of the day, it's in the hands of the voters, right? So I think we also have to be aware of this landscape. And even if we pass it, we don't have, we would still not have the money to do everything that everybody wants. We would still have to make decisions. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so this is probably something that you would wanna cover at the study session, but going over, going over to like how they, we have to let them know, you know, for the budgetary stuff. I, I don't understand how this is gonna work, in a way, because they're kinda gonna have to do like, when would the public safety sales tax, if it passed the referendum in November, when would it start? Like, when would it begin?
So we would start, the rev, it would begin with the fiscal year. But we would be budgeting before we knew, because the budget process ends in November, and the election is in November.
Yeah, and that's kinda what I was wondering, is it like, are they gonna have to, is admin gonna have to do like two budgets? I don't, you know, like a backup budget, just in case?
So, we, if you do the public safety sales tax and it passes, we would see the revenue in 2025 within our first tax distribution. So we would see it immediately within the budget process of 2025. There wouldn't be a delay in 2025 of getting the additional revenue. So that's like a good thing. The question that we need answered is, if the board isn't interested in proposing this to the voters, we need to know that before we go into the budget process. Because right off the bat, then it's, you need to bring a budget that cuts 15%, minimum. And it's gonna probably be more painful than that. If the board is willing to put this forward to the voters, then we can have a conversation with the department heads that are, your budget's gonna stay the same, but we need to identify worst-case scenario of what would get cut if it doesn't pass. Which is two very different conversations. And I don't think it's fair to the department heads to not give them plenty of warning if we're not gonna do this, because that is a huge cut for some of these departments that are very small.
No, I appreciate that, and that makes a lot of sense, thank you. Just quickly to follow up, and this might be something for the study session again, is I know that as a taxing body, or as a public body, we cannot like promote people to like vote for this, but we can do education. Like, is there a plan for that?
Yes, there's a plan, and there is a small amount of money set aside so that we can provide accurate information to the voters. We can't tell them how to vote, but we can provide them, again, accurate information about what we're asking them to vote for, and be very clear and transparent with them about what we would be spending the money on.
Right. And part of that education could be a conversation about what we would actually spend the money on. I have heard from members of the public who have both said, "It's a scheme, and we're not giving any money to the sheriff. It's all going to social service agencies." And I've had people say, "It's a scheme, and we're giving all the money to the sheriff, and nothing else," right? I've heard both, I've heard, like, I've had people that I've like talked to, and I'm like, man, we're scheming in both directions, right? So I think what we need to tell them is what we'd actually spend the money on. I will say, the vast majority of this, outside of the veterans affairs, the, and the employment compensation for the non-sheriff's folks, it has something to do with the justice system. Whether it be preventing juvenile, you know what I mean, the jury pay. So it is, like, I do feel like the reason we're going after public safety sales is because that is actually where our shortfall is, right? Lorraine?
Yeah, I'm kinda confused about the public safety, because I know that it was an ongoing thing. So what do we actually ask the voter to do? Increase the levy or?
Right, we'd be asking them to increase the levy by a quarter cent. And let me be real clear, I have heard also people say, well, couldn't you get away with like an eighth of a cent? Maybe, we can't. We have to do it in quarter cent increments. So it's either $7 million a year or nothing. It's just under, this year, it would've been just under $7 million. It would've been like $6,800, $6,800 something, I think. Yeah.
Okay, I had two questions. Will there be public meetings, so we can hear from constituents?
Yeah.
And the $15 million, I thought it was broken down into four years, but you're saying we're gonna have to come up with that $15 million?
No, no, that's why I put the $15 million. I don't know if we'd be able to stretch out the sort of payment of the Jano replacement. We're not, it's not like we're gonna be able to just come in and replace it all at once. It's gonna be a lot of work. I don't know if we'd be able to spread it out over four years. I think that's one of the things we'll get from the study that we're currently doing. I have been in conversation with Susan, who's leading point on that. Another county just did it, I believe it was Peoria County, I might be wrong about that. They just replayed their court system, and she, you know, gave them a call. They're in the mid, they're a little bit further ahead than us. And she was like, are we like way out of the ballpark with $15 million? And they were like, yeah, no. Like, if anything, I think we're, I'll be thrilled. Because the thing that's not on here, that really should be on here, is putting more money into our CARF, Capitalized Replacement Funds, for our public safety-related infrastructure. We do not put enough money in it right now. So like, if Jano, for some reason, came in less, then that's something that we could do. Right? But we'll cross that bridge when we find out. Hopefully, we'll know that going into the budget. And maybe, we might still have to issue short-term debt with Jano, right? But like, there'd be ways we could issue short-term debt for one or two years, right? That wouldn't be like going out to bond. And that's what we'd like to do, is not have to go out to bond. I mean, I don't even know if you can for software, that's like above my pay grade.
And how will we hold those public informational meetings for constituents?
Yeah, we would have to build that into the budget process, right? And into the decision-making process about this. But yeah, I think that we would need to get public feedback. Yeah, Aaron?
I guess kinda, again, you don't need to try to put numbers to this, if it is appropriate to include in this, but one, I guess, category I thought of was maybe, we are, at least, I know we have in the past on public safety, we've paid for like utilities. And I would imagine they aren't gonna go down. I would imagine somewhere we could find projected, probably going up. So I'm not so sure that, again, I'd not expect you to throw numbers at it, at this. But if it is appropriate, that would be another category. Would maybe be the utilities that we're paying on, again, the social, the justice, the jail, the court, the juvenile detention, because those are all, those can be paid out of public safety because of the category. So that's just another thought that I had of maybe would be appropriate. And again, I can't imagine the idea that they're gonna go down. So that would, again, potentially add to the deficit.
I agree. And then I wanna come back to, Michelle, and then I wanna comment on Erin, and then you, Ellie, yeah.
Yeah, we are currently paying all the public safety sales tax utilities out of the public safety sales tax. When the sheriff's office moves into the Bennett Administrative Center, we won't be able to pay their utilities out of the public safety sales tax anymore, because we won't be able to disaggregate what is actually for them and what's for the rest of the building. And we have seen a significant rate increase the last few years. I believe this year, we're renegotiating our rate contract. So I think, fingers crossed, the goal is to maybe just hold it at the rate it's at. Or maybe a small increase, but not a significant one, would be best-case scenario.
Erin, what I thought you were gonna say is, you've mentioned this too. We are now gonna be carrying a couple of different facilities that we're not using. And that's another, like, I know just to keep this building, if this building sits empty, the preventative sort of maintenance that's scheduled for the next 10 years is $3 million. If we could get this off our books, which I know admin is working on really hard, that means that would be $3 million that we could put into maintaining our other buildings. Right? And so I think that that's another, another really, really important piece. Steve, and then Ellie?
We're continuing to seek buyers. If we do not have any kind of a firm offer by sometime this summer, we'll be looking for a broker.
Ellie?
Just a couple missing things, the new courthouse. And I assume the $15 million for the Jano is the upfront cost. So there, that software line might jump up as well.
That's correct. That's like the implementation and design and build-out costs. And then we'll have continual software costs. Now, we do have current Jano software costs, but my guess is when we get like a system that's, you know, from this century, that those software costs will go up. The, you know, when you let your, all your software kind of go to pot, you pay bottom basement prices, because I don't even think, I could be wrong about this, I don't even think that there's like a service for what we have anymore. It's so old. Like, I also wanted to, I was originally gonna put the court on here, but for those of you that aren't on facilities, the facilities is embarking on a, okay, so now we've got this new building, and we have a new judge, and people are moving out of the public defender space, how do we need to reconfigure the courthouse? And that will at least be a million dollars if we embark upon that plan, right? And so, that's another whole capital thing that's not on here. But that study has just started. So those numbers seem too speculative to put on here.
I would not speculate on that at this point. We're just, we're just gathering information. The judge does want a new courtroom, and talking with Dana Brenner, we're looking at probably at least $700,000 if we decide to do that. But at this point, I wouldn't try and put a dollar figure on it.
And what Dana's doing is not figuring out, okay, we've got this new judge, how could we shoehorn him in somewhere? He wants to do a comprehensive youth study of the court. And it's been a long time since we've revisited it, and so it might be a more significant reconfiguration. I'll be honest, my guess is that might be our next bonding thing. Alright, that's what I have, but I keep, everybody, like, independently, people kept asking me, like, what would we spend the money on? And my response, slightly snarky, was like, the stuff we've talked about. But I realize it's not been one conversation. It's been spread over months and months of conversation. And so if it's cool, folks, I'll just stay here, that's what I've got. Items to be placed on the consent agenda would be A, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, B, 2, 3, and G, 1. We are agreeable today. I don't think I had any nays. The end. And Michelle, I saved this on here, so if you can add this as part of the record. I was just gonna give this to you, I don't know, maybe that was nerdy, but I like the idea of kinda building it out. So you could see the number dramatically go up and down.
Thank you, Dr. Fertato. Ms. Leah Taylor, Justice. I skipped there a little bit too quick. Dr. Store, Policy Personnel and Employments.
Thank you, Chair. Monthly HR report is on pages 35 to 39. Would Vice Chair Jeff Wilson care to raise some issues about the Juvenile Detention Center and deputies and so forth?
Yes, thank you.
Gosh, I did, that's strange I'd have to prompt you. Alright, I'm on Personnel Policy, so that's why I have more concern about the amount of staffing. And the Juvenile Detention Center just recently lost about six people, four to six people. And then also, but rather than my usual method of putting Steve on the spot, why are these numbers the way they are? I decided I would go ahead and reach out to the sheriff and the Juvenile Detention Center. And I thought it would be appropriate to give you the response that they gave me, so we're all on the same page with respect to staffing. And number one, I appreciate the quick response from JDC and from the sheriff. And I think it may be very helpful for us. So I'll be as quick as possible. Number one, so on the JDC, can you hear me? I don't need to swallow the mic, right? You can hear me? Okay, thank you. On the JDC, they recently lost 1, 2, 3, 4 people here in February. And the Assistant Superintendent hasn't left yet, but the vacancy occurs on the IDA of March on 3/15. And then there's the Court Services, another Court Services Officer in February. But I really appreciate Director Siders getting back to me. Did I say her name right? Is it Siders or Sitters? Siders with a, okay, hard eye, okay, Siders. And she did say she is struggling with vacancies at the Juvenile Detention Center. They currently have about 24 slots, 12 for female and 12 for male. All the female slots are full. Well, then really, the gap is on the male side. And they currently have six vacant male slots. But one, maybe a couple good things about this is, the Assistant Superintendent position, which is gonna be vacated on the 15th, will be filled on the 18th. So just three days later, there'll be a superintendent, Assistant Superintendent. And then last month, which this is actually a good thing, two individuals were actually promoted. So that's why there are vacancies on the Court Services Officer. Two of them were promoted to other open Assistant Superintendent spots, and then other two just left. I'm just not gonna say why they left, they just left. And then, as far as, the good thing is, the custody population is low. So that's helpful, as far as staffing. And that's made functioning a little bit easier. There are a couple challenges that I think I should highlight in. I have never worked in the JDC, and I probably never will, but I did accept an invitation to tour it next week or so, and then just, and visit the facility. But they, JDC is really struggling to retain staff for various reasons. And those reasons are fatigue, burnout, wellness, and the work schedule, that is, working nights and working evenings. And so that's a challenge for a number of people that really, even though when they sign up, knowing that they're gonna work a weekend or a night shift, that when rubber hits the road, they don't wanna do it. That's why when I got out of the Navy, I was done with shift work, and then said, "I'm just gonna go into engineering and not work operations, and not work nights and weekends," but it turned out to be a 24/7 job anyway. But anyway, I can understand working nights and weekends is probably not a good thing, or just is difficult. Any questions on JDC? Alright.
Are they gonna go down one more staff? The Assistant Superintendent that's being hired, and the reason it's so quickly is they're gonna promote somebody from within?
Found someone outside. Found another person, 3/18. Yes.
I was wondering about the population in the pay.
I actually don't know. Does, do liadino population? I have no idea what the population is, or as far as individuals, I have no idea.
Because you said the custody population is low?
Yes. Yes. So maybe with respect to how many is.
Yeah, we have that information. They have 10 currently.
Just 10.
All right, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's 10.
And no mention of pay for employee retention?
No, there was not a mention about pay. It's really fatigue, being tired.
And schedule.
Stress, weekend work, evening work.
Okay, thank you.
We, we probably do need to address pay. They have a bachelor's degree requirement for these positions imposed by the state, well, actually imposed by the Administrative Office of the Court System. And so, you know, $25 an hour for a bachelor's degree is, it's that, yes, it is that face right there. We do get a significant reimbursement from AOIC for these positions, so an increase would not be entirely something that we would have to cover, but like, if we wanted to pay more than the state is willing to pay, we would need to come up with that. And it will become a significant issue probably by the end of the year. They currently have a waiver that they can hire people without bachelor's degree because staffing is so difficult to do, but I believe the waiver expires at the end of the year, and we're not 100% certain that it's going to be renewed again. So, so it could be a problem soon.
All right, Ms. Fertato.
Just especially for those folks that are new on the board, twice in like the last year, year and a half, we've had to entirely shut down our JDC because we were not staffed and ship all of the young people that were staying there to Lake County until they could build back up their staff. So this is an ongoing, like, out of all of our sort of county staffing crisis, this is probably the most acute.
Perfect, so it's well worth the discussion. Or then, any more on JDC?
Can I just add one more thing? The staffing thing is really important. I was over there for something else a couple weeks ago, and they had quite a few youth from another county, because in that county, a youth had gotten ahold of a gun and shot some people inside their JDC. So they closed that JDC down and shipped all of those youth out immediately to deal with that situation. So, you know, low staffing, that's why it's, it's so quick to jump to, we just need to close, because it's not safe for anyone if they can't maintain the staffing. And there aren't many JDCs in the state, so it's, in a weird way to say, it's a resource for our community, for our youth, to be able to stay here where their family can get to them and access them if they are in JDC, as opposed to being shipped to Lake County. I mean, most likely up north, like, that's where the majority of the JDCs are. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of unfortunate value in being able to maintain our JDC for the youth that we have here that are accessing it.
Okay, did you?
All right, so real quickly, just keep the pace.
Did you want to go on to a second topic, please?
Yeah, I want to go on the sheriff's spot. So this one generally bothers me. There's 19 open spots here, and Sheriff Harmon, I know he said, is it Harmon or Harmon?
Harmon.
Harmon, okay, Sheriff Harmon, he got back to me, and I appreciate his response, it was pretty quick. And I wonder, but, you know, it's the admin's choice here, if there would be a nice footnote that goes with this monthly report. And so from the sheriff's perspective, the report is misleading. I guess I generally, when I look at this, I get misled too, and it's difficult to understand because the dates are always shuffling around. So you could see, and when I look at this, seems like the dates are different a lot. But there's two groups here, law enforcement and corrections. As far as law enforcement is concerned, the sheriff is saying he is fully staffed, but he is anticipating two vacancies coming up. And right now, they're in the hiring process, and he's not concerned about it. The next part is on the correction side. There's actually, has been consistently 10 positions lacking, 10 positions down over the years, and for the first time these years, they're getting quite a few applications. So that's a good thing. So they're getting quite a few applications, which in this case, quite a few means free to him, and we currently have five in background checks, which is good, and more interviews scheduled. Then as far as there's the opening slot for the correctional sergeant, and he's going to hold that open for a while, and is anticipating promoting from within. And then the clerk in corrections, I think that's a little ambiguity with this, is he's still waiting to consider, right, the best option for that position. Well, that's what I have from the sheriff. Any questions?
You got more out of them than I did. Good job.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I'll, I'll just add on to something Jeff said. We actually kind of have, they said that they've kind of been filling some of the correctional officers' slots. So it, it used to be a lot higher number, and, and now it, some of those correctional officer positions have been filled, but we, we could still use additional correctional officers, because as Stephanie mentioned, we're going to bring some of those folks from other counties back to, to Champaign. County Executive Summers.
I just want to point out that the information that we're giving is based on the positions that we have available in the budget. The sheriff has the option of holding some of these positions open, and is holding some of them open. We've had an enormous number of inmates that are no longer in county, so the idea that we need to have all the correctional officers that are listed here right now really doesn't seem to be an accurate need. So we're basing the numbers off of the, the information that we have. Some of this is a decision of the sheriff.
Ms. Carter.
Thank you, Dr. Store. And that was my question. Considering the, the lower population in the jail with the elimination of cash bail, I was wondering, are those correctional offers even needed, you know? And that was the question that I would have to present to the sheriff when I meet with him.
So, I mean, he could definitely answer as well. From what I've heard from him, from the state's attorney and the public defender, is the jail population numbers are not significantly declining. People are in and out faster, but the number of people coming in and out is not reducing to a number where we could justify fewer officers to address the situation.
Thank you.
I, oh, Mr. Smith.
Just got one thing. Just got one thing. On the vacant positions on page 37, under the Circuit Court Law Librarian, I, I'm thinking there needs to be an annual rate of pay or something in there, but it doesn't show an hourly rate of pay, but the annual rate of pay.
So that position is intentionally being left vacant. They don't want to eliminate the position, but they're not needing to fill it right now, and we're not appropriating any money to it, so that's why we don't have a rate of pay for it.
Mr. Wilson.
Oh, one more quick thing. The VAC admin is, shows vacant on this report, and I, I followed up on that, that admin position will be filled on April 1st.
I, I was told, and I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly, but I think it was by somebody in the corrections, that they want to fill some of these correctional officer positions because they, they need trained officers when they bring the population back, so they can't just kind of bring them back and then not have trained officers. Moving on to item number two, recognizing March 19th as National Agricultural, Agriculture Day in Champaign County. And is a resolution, and with everyone's indulgence, I will stumble through that resolution. Resolution recognizing March 19th, 2024, I don't know, as National Agriculture Day. In support of Champaign County agriculture, the Champaign County Board recognizes the significant impact agriculture plays within our county, state, and country. Agriculture is Illinois's number-one industry, employs citizens of this state, from farm fields to urban farms, and to the manufacturing of food and fiber. Agriculture is essential to the daily lives of American citizens. Whereas, Illinois accounts for 70,700 farms, which equates to 26,300,000 acres, and whereas, 96% of farms are family-owned within Illinois, and whereas agriculture contributes a total of $543.1 billion in agricultural products, and whereas, the total value of crops in 2022 was $281 billion, up 45% from 2017. For livestock, the value was $262 billion, up 35%. And whereas, the American farmer represents one of the oldest professions in our country, the farmer has evolved to embrace new technologies that protect our soil, water, and air. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Champaign County Board, that the Champaign County Board does hereby recognize March 19th, 2024, as National Agriculture Day. This Board calls on our citizens to recognize and celebrate the contributions of farmers and farm families have made to better the lives of our citizens. Presented, adopted, approved, and recorded this 21st day of March, anno domine 2024. Do I here have a motion? I'm going to select a farmer. Mr. Esri. Second, Mr. Sexton. Thank you. Is there a discussion to the resolution, any amplification or speaking to the, to the motion? Uh-oh. Mr. Wilson.
It's not really an uh-oh, but I, I'm glad this is for Illinois, but I want to know what is happening in Champaign itself. And I, I reached out to Bailey to get some statistics on Ba, from Bailey, and I thought it might be informative as far as Champaign County. And this is based on the most recent 2022 data. It takes two years to get the data managed, but the number of farms in Illinois showing here is 70,000. In Champaign County, there's 1,300. 1,300. And the interesting fact is, in 1987, there were nearly 2,000 farms. Now it's 1330, so farms, the number of farms has reduced by 30%. And then the average farm size, what's the average farm size? Anybody know? Just a guess.
1,500.
1,500. Anybody else?
250.
250? All right, so it's 410. 410 acres is the average farm size, and then as far as total property or acreage, we're down 11%. And I asked Bailey to give me four concerns and four good things, and these are her four concerns. One is the adverse impact of regulation and land use. Number two, the aging of farming succession, because aging population of farmers and their generations may or may not want to follow up in the farming. Broadband access, which we have a broadband committee, and then the fourth and final one, which is where Bailey was tonight, is post office consolidation. I didn't realize how much the rural districts, maybe Erin, you know how much they count on the male being on time. I just didn't know that. All right, four good things, real quickly. And this is an uptick. 28% of the producers of farm that's labor and then make decisions related to farm and agriculture are women. So that's up. 28% are women, and the new technology is also an improvement and an expectation to help prosperity, and conservation is up, cover crops, et cetera, and there's a lot of students pursuing ag degrees. Anyway, thanks Bailey for giving me that information. I think that provides some context to our resolution.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Esri.
Just a quick comment on Jeff. Thank you for getting ahold of Bailey, but I just might mention, especially for those watching, and maybe for some here in this room, Bailey, of course, is Bailey Conrady, Champaign County Farm Bureau manager, so just point of reference when you're saying Bailey.
Thank you, Erin. And when do we start putting seeds in the ground?
If you have crop insurance, you could start planting beans March 20th. And there's been fieldwork, we've done some light fieldwork already, so it's a, as of right now, it's looking like it may be in early spring, but who knows? We could still get a blizzard, and that wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing either.
Very, very good. Thank, thank you, thank you, Erin. Thank you, Jeff. Oh, we have to vote on the resolution. All in favor of the resolution as red, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, appointments and reappointments. Please to announce resolution appointing Paula Bates as the supervisor of assessments. Term ending April 30th, 2028. Do I have a, a motion? Ms. Covert? And second by Erin Esri, thank you. Discussion of the motion. Mr. Esri.
Just a quick comment, as many years as she's been there, I don't know that I've really ever heard anything negative. I mean, not even so, anything small, so I'm sure somebody somewhere has some complaint, but I've not heard it, and it's probably pretty darn small anyway, so I'd just like to say thank you for her, her service thus far, and hope that she's willing to continue for quite a while more.
Well said. Dr. Fertato.
As Finance Chair, I want to say she might be, like, one of our best deals that we have. Before he left, Council, but Board Member Wayne Williams gave me a bonkersvillely detailed assessment of how much we underpay Paula compared to other counties. He cut it like nine different ways, and in every way, we underpay Paula. And so far, she has continued, and she has said that she hasn't, you know, one of the things I said in the last budget cycles, we got to get this right, and, and I don't want to say she said. She, she got some increase, but it was not, we are still not paying her what other counties are paying, according to this, like I said, very detailed analysis. So she's awesome, and at a really affordable rate for, for what we're paying.
Steve, Summers.
On that note, I have encouraged Paula to ask for a salary increase through this next budget cycle.
Oh, boy.
And a portion of her budget is paid by the state, so if we do give her a, a budget level that puts her in the same ballpark as similar counties, it will, only, only half of that will be coming out of, out of our general revenue fund.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. The motion passes unanimously. We have some vacant appointments that are listed online, and applications for open appointments coming up, mostly coming up are fire protection districts, but we've got some other slots coming up down the line, and so please check that out. The monthly fee report is in the, in the packet, and the County Board Chair recommends some appointments to the County Board Committees. Would you like to make these, Madam Chair?
No problem. I sure will, Dr. Store. My recommendations for the Labor Committee member would be Don Owens, the Labor Committee Vice Chair, J.J. Farney, Litigation Committee Member, Jen Locke, and broadband litigation committee member, Jen Locke, and broadband task force member, Lorraine Covert.
Thank you very kindly. Do I, do I, Miss, Aaron Esri, would like to make a motion? Oh. Oh. Oh, okay. In that case, Samantha makes the motion. Aaron seconds the motion. Discussion of the motion. It's the last chance to withdraw. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. There is no other business. Against my better judgment, I won't put up a spreadsheet. Designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda are Roman numeral eight, A two, three, three A, and C one. Chair Carter, back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Store. Ms. Leah Taylor, Justice and Social Services.
Thank you. We have item A, the monthly reports are available on each department's webpage. Public defender for February of 2024. The Emergency Management Agency, February of 2024. The Veterans Assistance Commission, February of 2024. And Probation and Court Services for January of 2024. Kind of going back to the EMA one, I do wonder if their March report will tell us why nine-one-one was down? That was kind of crazy. Moving on to item B, Rosecrance has sent us their reentry program report for January 2024, which we also did see last month because we talked about it. But now it's placed on file. Steve, I'm assuming we have to vote on item two? Or is it just information only?
No, it's not listed as information only. So yeah, we do need to have a vote on that, please.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Thank you. So can I get a motion for approval of the renewal of the contract for the reentry programming, which is listed on pages sixty-two to eighty of your packet? I have Locke and Hanauer Friedman, first and second. Is there any discussion? Mike?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'd just like to make a friendly amendment change recommendations on page seventy-four. It talks about having a member of the Democratic County Board Caucus and a member of the Republican County Board Caucus. And I'm thinking as a county board, we're all public servants. We're not party servants. And I'd just like to recommend maybe have a, a primary county board member and an alternate county board member. So if the primary can't be there, the alternate can pick up. If that would be acceptable.
Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
My thought is I'm very intimidating. To, I see where you're coming from, because we only have one vote within the executive committee for how to, how to push that forward. As we're both public servants, we agree most of the way. So I see where Mr. Smith is coming from. But in talking to Admin, it's my understanding that going back to the beginning of reentry, we've had a member of each party assigned. So my fifteen months all alone there was an outlier. So I, as the person who's been there for now sixteen months, I see, I have no preference, one way or the other. But I know that this has already been reviewed by Mr. Bannock. So we don't want to create more work, even though we have a new, a new attorney in the civil division. We don't want to create more work. So I would support this as is, and maybe going forward, we could readdress that in the next year's contract.
Dr. Store.
I've served on the reentry committee in the past, and I, I support Vice Chair Jen Locke's notion that we should keep it the same for now. And I, and I, I take your point. Having served with Jim McGuire in the past, we haven't always agreed, but we found consensus there most, most of the time. And I, I think it's, it's, if somebody from the Republican caucus could find the time to attend, it would, it'd be informative. And, and I think your caucus or, or somebody, whoever served, would, would find it very interesting.
I agree with Jen and with Dr. Store. And I do understand your point, and I do think that maybe we should revisit this next year prior to the contract being sorted out. Do you still want to move forward with your friendly amendment? No?
It, it, it doesn't have to be done for this one. It's a, after attending a couple of the meetings with Jen speaking for it and only having one vote, it, it just seemed to be the common sense thing to do.
I understand. I totally do. I do think that there is added value to having both sides of the aisle as part of this reentry council, even though you only technically have one vote. But that's something for the next board to decide next year. Is there any other discussion or questions about the contract? Mr. Wilson and then Mr. Esri.
Thanks, Jen, for putting this together. Appreciate your hard work and the effort that goes into it. So thank you very much. A couple of questions. I think what's more concerning to me is having solid metrics of performance. And I'm, I'm, I'm not, not finding it in the contract. That's my, my biggest curiosity. How many, like, let's take recidivism. I hope I pronounced that correctly. What is the goal? Is there a goal? Should there be a goal? I'll, I'll use that one first.
I guess that's for me. So I don't think that when we give money to public health, we give it on the condition of elimination of all disease. I don't think that when we give money to the sheriff, we give it on the condition of eliminating all crime. Recidivism prevention is the goal of this, and recidivism is easy. That's, did you become reincarcerated after your release? And that's, that is right there. Now, we've had, you've been on the board the same amount of time as I am, so we each had one presentation given to us in our time on the board from reentry so far. And the numbers that were presented last year were, by the former reentry worker, were clients who made a goal and achieved those goals while working volunteer, voluntarily with the gentleman. I, I would say that we have hard data now in that we know what sort of assistance is being provided. And we actually do now have a list of if they've left, why did they leave the program, and have they been reincarcerated? So I mean, there's always room for improvement. And, you know, obviously, going forward, we can always tweak, and we can, you know, have other things to look for. And, but in terms of measuring, is it a failure if there is a person who's reincarcerated? I don't think that should be the metric, that should be the measure. Did I answer your question, or did I overstep?
Madam Lee, can I inter, say something at this point? Recid, as you'll find, hey, not only having worked on the, served on the reentry council, but also working sometimes in the, in the jail with a mental health group, you'll, you'll find people of all ages, they have all backgrounds, all kinds of experience. And, and I, I think Ms. Locke is pointing out that it's, it's, it's complicated. And I encourage you to, if, if you have the time or can find the time, to consider serving on that council and talking with some of the agencies, volunteer organizations, and departments to get a, a broader picture of, of this. Because I, I, I see the numbers too. And certainly, we don't, they don't want to go back, and, and we don't want to see them go back. And, but it, things are, people's struggles in life are pretty different and unique. And they meet those challenges at their own schedule.
And, and another reason why I think it's very important for you to be a part of that board, Mr. Smith, is that I think we should, as a whole body, be able to see the reentry program for what it is. And they are community members that are seeking to reintroduce themselves back into our society. I think in the past, certain people have, have frowned upon the reentry programs. And, and me personally, I, I didn't care for that. And so I'm thinking that it's good someone from your side and from our side both see the whole big picture, what details involved with the, the reentry process.
Thank you, Chair Carter. It still makes us all public servants, and that reentry is to keep our public safe. Thank you.
Mr. Esri, you've been very patient.
No problem. Good discussion as far as I'm concerned. I'm just, I guess, kind of just wanting to, not, not that we don't all know this, but remind us all, I believe, unless I'm wrong, you can correct me, Ms. Locke. It is kind of a rebuilding right now. I believe in the past, I think I'm kind of accurate, there's been questions probably on both sides of the aisle. Are we getting what, you know, getting out of it, what we're putting into it? I don't think that there's the will to go away from it at all, you know, completely. But with this rebuilding that's kind of going on, I mean, not that raising questions like this aren't appropriate. It is kind of the appropriate time. I mean, maybe not in timing with the contract, but especially with this being kind of a rebuilding year. And I appreciate Jen's work to help hopefully maybe get us more reports and more of the information that we would like to see as a board. This is the time kind of to he, bring those questions forward. I mean, it's as good a time as any, anyway, I should say. So yeah, if you have those questions, bring them forward, and, you know, hopefully we can start getting the answers. You know, whether it be the way that they're presented or answers that we just don't have yet to some certain group of how they can put it out, you know, statistically or whatever. So it's, yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's as good a time as any for these types of questions to be brought up, as far as I'm concerned. That's just kind of my take on the whole subject. So thanks.
No, that's exactly, that's perfect. Because, and I, I don't know if you feel the same way, I, I think you do, where like this next year is basically, like, in my mind, what the reentry council is like, they're ramping up, they're getting new prop, you know, reports like we've talked about and discussed here. You know, we're just kind of carrying the contract forward for the next year, and we can kind of start to see what they can really do. And, you know, where we might want to change the contract, possibly looking at metrics, that sort of thing built into it potentially next year. But just to kind of give them this buffer to finish ramping up, get all of their stuff in place, see what they can do. Is that what you're thinking, Jen?
That is what I'm thinking. And also, the best time for questions about effectiveness is next month's COW, when they'll be here to present and answer questions from the board.
Stephanie?
Yeah, I, I do want to point out that one of the, like, in the programming plan, which is an attachment to this, about the reentry council, there's, in, on page seventy-four to seventy-five, there's multiple stipulations for the reentry council doing system-wide outcome matrices and evaluation. And I think it's more so, so that is part of this requirement of, of this contract. I think it's more so that we, as a board, haven't asked for that. Like, we haven't actually asked for that reporting back. We did sometimes get that, especially from Mr. McGuire, who I think this, serving on this, on this reentry council was like kind of the heart of his heart for being on the board. But I do think, for various reasons, maybe the pandemic, maybe changes in personnel, but that piece of it, I think a more sort of like report backs from our liaisons and hearing from them directly will address some of those things, right? But the reentry council is, is sort of the group that's supposed to be overseeing that sort of evaluative work. And it's, and it's, and I know that is an important part of what they do.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. What am I not saying? I am not saying that the program is not worthwhile. I'm a hundred percent supportive of the program. I'm like a thousand percent supportive of the program. It's a philosophical question. If we can't measure, we don't know how to improve. And that's the philosoph, philosophy behind it. So if on the statewide level, there's about a thirty to thirty-five percent return rate, or whatever rate you want to call it, how does our program match up? And so we'll do this over next year? Fine. I'm just, I'm speaking philosophically. If you can't measure, and you don't know what you're measuring or why you're measuring, it's very difficult to improve. So let's say, thank God, a hundred percent people became effective individuals in society. Then you'd have the whole world coming down and say, what in the world are you doing? And why are you doing it so wonderfully? If you have, oh, if it's the opposite end, right? Then you would think, there's something going on here that's not right. That was my thought process on that. So I'm okay, we could table that, but I just want to explain, I embrace the program. I'm just seeking ways on how to make it better. And then the second item is related to the council. Lot of great people on this. Is the role of the council and the decisions of the council directive to Rosecrance, or is it advisory, and Rosecrance can take it or leave it?
The council, in my time on it, and Dr. Store can speak to his time, has been more collaborative. The, the largest obstacle to individuals reentering the community has been housing since COVID, probably since before, but certainly since COVID, it's been housing. And so a great portion of the discussion monthly is housing. So there's, you know, and how to help people that are in the community and then get them so that they can be functional. And we're dealing with landlords who don't want to, don't want to rent to people who have a record. They're dealing with all these issues. And so it's been collaborative between not just Rosecrance, Champaign County healthcare consumers is involved, the mental health board is involved, our board is involved, and a host of other, Senator Ferraci's office comes frequently, probation is there. So it's brainstorming and collaboration, and that is the council itself. But then there is the, the worker who, who has the hands-on role with the, with the individuals coming back into the community. And so the council, like, I don't touch the people coming in. Like, I don't know who the people are, and it would be inappropriate for me too at this point. But, so the council itself steers where there's a need at this point. And maybe that needs to change as well. We are having a meeting in the next couple of weeks where, with Julia Reitz has been invited because they've been listed and they haven't attended in my time, her office. But we're going to have all the county stakeholders. But we're going to have all the county stakeholders come and get their perspective on what this should be during our rebuilding year, so that we can better reflect the county's will, not just the will of social workers who don't, or whatever, you know? We want to reflect the will of the county, since the county is funding so much of this, but it's kind of gathering people back together and making this a priority for an afternoon so we can find out what our various county stakeholders would like to happen.
I have Stefan and Ellie.
Just really quickly, I just want to point out that if you look at the sort of charging sheet from the sheriff's office, the number one thing where you see sort of repeat offender is domestic violence, and I want to reiterate that I think that if we actually want to address recidivism, that we as a county need to come up with a more robust plan to address domestic violence. It's one of the great, I would argue, healthcare crises in our county, and I know we have the opioid task force, I think that we need a similar kind of task force where we're bringing people together to think about that as an intervention, because I think it's going to take more than just the reentry council. But if you look at actual repeat offenders, I mean, we have multiple people coming through our jail, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve times, concrete, discreet times, and they sometimes will have multiple charges, but almost always, it's repeat domestic violence.
Ellie?
I just wanted to point out to Jeff's two questions, I think they're both very clearly answered on page seventy-five. As we already mentioned, all of the evaluation criteria is there in those top bullet points that the council will be working on, and then it says that, well, provider will work with the reentry council on these matters, its contract and ultimate obligation is to the county board, so they report to us.
Sir, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Moving on, I don't have any other business. Does anybody else have any other business? No? Okay, I don't have a chair's report. Designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda is item B two. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. I do got a question for Ezri. Will we be able to sign up for tractor rides this season?
Not going to say it's not possible. Get a hold of me, the worst thing is to degree, just looking at it from my standpoint, is kind of knowing how the day's gonna, the next day's gonna, you know, fall, you know? I mean, what's going to happen the next day? To get you to like where the tractor would be at would be fairly easy, you know, I could send you a pin on a, through a message to like Google Maps or something, but, I mean, I've kind of been thinking about it, and I'm not going to rule it out, so I mean, I'll think about some more, if you're truly interested, maybe just also just drop me a line or something. It's doable, definitely, it's, the tractor, I mean, I'm in the planter tractor, there's room for two people, that is basically it, though. I mean, it's not, and it's not necessarily, even with just normal-sized people, I mean, my size, two of me is not necessarily comfortable for long periods. Just stating the facts, but it's doable, definitely. So it's not like, and I know Samantha, you have your son, I'm not going to say we can't fit him in if he was available on like a Saturday or something, but that would be even more uncomfortable because there is just that much less room. It's just not truly made for, there's a seat, it's hard, there is a seatbelt, but, I mean, it's doable, though.
And also, I was keeping in mind our new board members, too. I think that would be good for them as well. I did enjoy my tractor ride. It was meditating and soothing to my soul. I had never experienced it in my life, and I really did enjoy it, so.
And just, I'm not going to say that there's a true, I think they generally tend to do it more in the fall, but that is something also, if board members are truly interested in it, to, I could contact her, Bailey Conrady again, and she can definitely, you know, there are other farmers, obviously, on the county Farm Bureau Board and stuff, that they're willing to, you know, let people come out and ride. I mean, Dad, just a quick example, Dad, last year, the one neighbor that we've farmed up against, just the common borderline elderly neighbor, didn't even know him, Dad was out chiseling corn stalks, and Dad just stopped and asked him if he wanted a ride, and the guy was like, sure, and he, he's, I think he was eighty-something years old, he's, he's in his seventies, he'd never done anything like that, and he thoroughly enjoyed it. I mean, chiseling, chiseling's a little bit different than planting, because it's a little more laid back, you could say, it's not so much of a, kind of a get it done when you can chiseling. But yeah, I mean, there's a lot of us that do not mind at all other people riding along to experience it. So if that's something that we're truly interested in, I could contact Bailey and have her put together, because I'm sure she can draw from people that have done it in the past and are, I'm sure, willing to still do it, to have rides. I mean, it shows people what's out there. I mean, yeah, our planter isn't the most, planter setup tractor are not the most technological, but it's turn it around on the end, push the buttons and hands off, and it drives across the field in a straight line, and you turn it around on the other end and go back again. I mean, that's GPS for you, it's, we're not even the most technological insofar as detail, but we're probably down to the sub-inch or inch or two at the most, maybe, as far as accuracy on keeping it side to side. So it's pretty neat, yeah, so if there's an interest, and it looks like maybe there is, I'll try and remember, I will, I'll drop a line to Bailey maybe even yet tonight or tomorrow and just say, hey, there are county board members that would be interested, and see what she can come up with, because I'm sure she can reach out to her board, the Champaign County Farm Bureau Board and other Farm Bureau members, and get a list of them together to get back with us.
And also the connection with technology and Wi-Fi, like, that was interesting to me to understand how that all works together, like, I didn't know that, so I'm pretty sure board members are interested in finding out more. Steve, did you have something?
I would suggest every county board member contacts Stanley Harper and ask for a ride in his tractor.
And I would imagine Stan, I imagine Stan would be willing, too. I mean, seriously, I mean, he would be, I'm sure. But the thing is, of course, there's just enough of us, and to get us all in one planning season, I mean, logistics, so. And to be kind of frank about, too, the idea of, okay, we have, from my standpoint, you know, the idea of, it wouldn't be in my thinking unless it was like towards the end of planning, to have like one scheduled for like an hour and another and another, well, that's just going to kind of knock out that day, you know? You wouldn't want to, because it would just take time to get people on and off and stuff like that, so you wouldn't want necessarily, from my standpoint, is one person have multiple people in one day. That's why it'd be easier, spread it out among, amongst other farmers. And we're out there, we're willing, definitely. And to not keep going on about this, but if you're out traveling, and I'm serious, if you're out traveling, like, next fall, you're in a different part of the country, you see somebody out there picking cotton, okay, that's not done around here, with cotton pickers and strippers and stuff, Dad has done it, and I imagine most farmers, at worst they can do probably is say no, hopefully they wouldn't chase you away with a gun, I'm just saying, very few of them wouldn't, but Dad has literally stopped, and I remember even as a kid, one of our family vacations, we stopped with cotton, Dad rode in the picker, and my sister and I got to climb up in the bull wagon and play in the cotton. So if you're out in a different part of the country especially, but even around here, and there's someone out doing field work, and you aren't going to totally, you know, mess them up, apparent, you know, if it was, if it's obvious that you aren't going to throw them off for some reason, stop in and ask if you could ride a little bit. Again, I would think the worst they could do, say no, we don't have time, or whatever. I mean, you'd probably be surprised how many people would say, sure, jump in for a ride.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Is there any other business? All right, well, we will call this meeting adjourned at nine o'clock. Thank you.